If I could have your attention, I'd like to bring the special meeting of the School Board Petaluma, 28/2015, to order. And would like to ask that our superintendent, Mr. Bowman, lead us in the pledge of leave. Ready, begin.
I would like to lead this to the flag, the United States of America, and a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
We have a translator from our district, so she is going to translate my next inquiry. So is there anybody that needs a Spanish translation during this meeting?
I need to get the Spanish one.
Alright, thank you. So, real quick, before we get there's going to be two phases to this. We have our non-agendized public comment portion, like we do at our regular meetings, in which you can speak to anything that's within the subject matter of the board that's not on the agenda. And what's on the agenda today? We had the selection process criteria discussion on Tuesday, which was an agendized item. Today, we're talking about the qualities and the skill sets of what you want to see in our new superintendent. Who do you want him or her to be? So it will be on the criteria. There's cards out there, fill it out, please, to speak on a public comment, but if it's on agenda, just put "agenda" in circulu. And there's two different cards for that, okay? So make sure you fill out the correct one, and then... I have one at home, and now I have one on the board apparently.
The yellow cards are for public comment, and that's another form.
Right. There's, anyhow. Public comment, there's another card up there for agendized item, and then there's a full-page sheet in deference to your time. If you want to fill that out and leave us with just your written remarks and comments, and not be here, because we're going to be here for three hours, you're free to do that, and if that suits your schedule today, they will be reviewed, they will be read, and we'll have your input. So you've got three different ways to give your input today, but the agendized item, again, is for the criteria and the specific skill sets all you would like to see in the new superintendent.
If you want to make it more about the process rather than the skill set, where is that?
That would be in open public comment, not on agenda, that's not an agendized item.
I feel like a kid who spoke me. I amend my card to be more clear then.
Okay.
Mary Beth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So these yellow ones are for the open public comment, the yellow ones. And the open public comment is going to go first.
Thank you. Wait, I have to end my report.
Alright, ready to go? I'll give you, you know, a few minutes to go ahead and fill out. Okay, we just want to leave on the criteria, second one, just put it together.
Now that we have a comment each one, so on the non-regular public comment, we can talk about anything, new playground equipment for the high school, this. The reason why we'd like what's agendized today, what you think the next superintendent should have, should do, we should be looking for, we'd like you to put that on this, so it's easy for staff to flag and make sure our minutes and all the information that we gathered from you today is easier to find. Does that make more sense? So if you're going to comment on the agendized portion, do it on this, and that way we can make sure it gets that pile of information. So like, Andy Turco, I'm just going to keep this one for the process, which is not agendized, and then if you fill out another one like that for the agendized item?
It's really mostly about qualities of the superintendent.
Okay, then grab this, fill out this one, and that way we can make notes on that, and we can have that one. So do you want me to X this one out, or do you still want a regular?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
And you only have to...
No, that's not, that's someone, yeah, sorry. Okay, so I'm going to cross this one out.
You only have to fill out the written comments if you don't want to speak. If you're going to speak, just put your, you know, name here, and I'll call you up during the agenda comment section.
And if you just want to fill it out and leave it in the back, that's fine too.
Right, so we're given the option.
Sorry.
Okay, so, on open public comment, I'm going to make a final call. Anybody who wants to speak in open public comment, give us your cards, because I have to allocate the time. We have 20 minutes for open public comment, and then we'll proceed on to our agendized item. Okay? Has everybody that wants to speak filled out their public comment cards? Having said that, why don't you get them, and I'll start calling them. So, let's have Mary Beth Cullen, would you like to come up and lead your public comments?
Why are we wasting our time? Ah, good morning. Okay, so I'm Mary Beth Cullen, I'm a teacher at Missy Air Elementary, and also I live in Petaluma. All three of my daughters attend Petaluma schools. So, for this part, I would like to talk about the composition of the hiring committee for the superintendent. And what I'd like to share with you is a practice that we have used very often in this district in the past, when we've been hiring administrators from principals all the way on up to superintendent. And the process is this, that we form a hiring committee that consists of parents, classified staff, teachers, administrators, and school board members. At the first meeting of that committee, typically confidentiality is established, because that's a very important part of being on the committee, is that it is a confidential process. A initial paper screening is usually done by whatever qualified experts that district thinks is appropriate to, you know, discern who the qualified candidates are. And then that initial paper screening has run to the hiring committee, and the hiring committee from those applications then chooses the candidates they want to interview. And the hiring committee also decides on the interview process, so the questions, if they have some kind of enactment, and then they go ahead and they interview the candidates. Following that, the, there's the records checks are made, and, you know, all of that background information. And finally, the hiring committee makes its recommendation to the board, and the board then has the final decisions about who to hire. And that is exactly what I would recommend be the makeup of the committee for hiring the superintendent, because this is the most important, you know, job in our district. Right now, I have no idea if I'm the only person who's going to speak to the hiring committee process or not, so what I would like to do is just turn to the audience and just get a sense of if you're in the audience and you believe the hiring committee should consist of classified staff, parents, teachers, administrators, and school board members, would you just please stand right now?
Could I just make a comment?
Wait, 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 Mary Beth, this isn't...
Well, I'm just, I'm going to...
I get what you did, I get what you did, but you made a public comment.
Yes, but...
My thoughts and comments, thank you for observing it, and thank you for your time.
Okay, next would be Sandra Larson.
Good morning, I'm Sandra Larson, I teach second grade at Valley Vista, I'm the chief negotiator for PFT 1880, I'm also a resident of Petaluma, and all three of my children are educated from Penn State School. The first thing I want to talk about is when I consider this false hysteria about we have to rush this because there's so many openings, I would love to see a list of those openings, and how many schools are in that district. A one-school district superintendent is a totally different skill set. We're the second-largest district in this county, second highest paying position in schools in this county, we don't have to rush this, we can really find a qualified candidate to build us back. We're in a very difficult position right now, and having a hiring committee that doesn't seem built in the community, and having this rush through is just not going to help this person be successful, or our district get to the next step, or we all look forward to it. So I would at least request that we could see a list of these, it keeps growing, superintendent positions that are open, how many schools are in the district, and I would ask this committee to not rush this process, it's way too important, not to the town and to the students and the public.
Okay, next, we have Ginny Grayson.
Good morning, Boardman Murkton-Wolbert, she'll need to make out all the details room. I am a teacher here, and also a parent, administrator at McKillen. And this last week, I had an opportunity to speak to an old Adobe board member who frequents our school as a substitute, she's also a retired manager. And just out of curiosity, I asked her about the processing, the process for hiring superintendents at Old Adobe, and if it, see, it was the same as what's done here, and she said that at Old Adobe, they have a committee of administrators and teachers and parents, and classified staff, as well as at least a board member, and that committee interviews, paper screens, makes a recommendation to the board in regard to hiring. And I'm curious why our policy here is so different, and if it is a matter of just being a word policy that was written that you are abiding by, perhaps it's time to reconsider that policy, because it does feel very top-down, and it's very alienating to the teachers and the community. And while we have a climate here that is so bursting with a sentiment, or let's say a deficit of trust, it might be in the best interest of the relations between the community and the district to relook at that policy and change it, and open it up, and make it more transparent, and involve more people. Thank you.
So, there being no more public comment cards, we'll close the public...
Well, I have one, I'm sorry, is that, okay, this is superintendent's search though? Yes. Okay, is it about character traits, about part of the community? Yeah, follow it. That's what we're going to do. Oh, I'm sorry, it was late, that's okay. Ellen wants to speak to this. Ellen Hathaway? That's you. No, no, let me quiet. Can you fill out one of these?
Sure. Sorry, I didn't see a statement yet. No, you have a statement. What we're doing is, these were for public comment that we were about to do. And the other ones are having, so we can come together, please. Okay, thanks.
So we called, we closed off the public comment process when I asked for cards, but you done your late entry?
Yeah.
But...
It wasn't too clear, that whole double card thing, I've never seen it before, I'm sorry.
Well, we mean to confuse you or throw you off the game, but come on up.
Well, I'm, I'm sort of myself a smart person, but, you know, we don't do that at the board meetings, it's just a different, whole different game.
No, we just want to make sure we save everything that's about the qualities, so we can go through them.
Okay, that's good, that's a good thing. Thank you for being here. Thank you, everybody, for the public.
Just, you know, each speaker has five minutes, so just, before you go, I want to get into time, rest, and then...
So, I don't think it will be five, although, you know, like 40 pieces here. This is a, this is a book, you guys, excuse me, you folks, like sports, and Hoffman uses this as metaphor analogies, and it's very exciting, it's baseball season, and so on. So I have, you know, Branch Rikie's little blue book here, and I've got annotations of all kinds of little sticky stuff, I'm going to take you through 40 little spots here, but, you know, we have, we have an opportunity, like, like Mr. Rikie did in the day. We're off the same tree, or as if we're branch. And this opportunity is a new page, I don't have anything prepared, but it's a new page, it's a fresh start, and we can start to build some trust. He had to go up before his missionaries, and they were really against any kind of integration, any kind of participation of any black players, at that time, anybody of color. And, you know, I'm not bringing this to a racial issue, but, you know, we're at an opportunity here, or worthy for you, as a public and as employees, to really start a new chapter and build trust, because that's kind of the foundation of this whole thing, and that's kind of why things are shifting and changing. And that's the way I see it, this is my personal comment, as a teacher. And, you know, we can start a whole new foundation here, open this process up, and build in a team, bring in a team sense that we're working as a team. And it's not just a couple lines in a contract that says here, decision-making, and the rest is blown off, like it has been in the past. We can make this really work by being inclusionary. You know, Branch made that inclusionary, he had his team believe in him, so when he did try to integrate his team, if they disagreed with him, he brought them in, if they left the team, everybody was in agreement, this is a good, this is the right thing we need to do. We know what is the right thing to do, and I think you do too. This is an opportunity for participatory government. We're before you, we're speaking, we're requesting that you open this process up, like a democratic process, and you include the stakeholders, if you will, which seems to be the new, the new word of choice, the workers, the people that this person will lead and inspire, that's the person that's going to make the difference in how these students are taught, because if that inspiration comes from a topic, someone motivational and innovative, then the students will respond, and that's what we're trying to do, right? I think so, I think so. So I would really like you to listen to the previous comments about this process, and opening the process, slowing down the process, we could get an interim, they fill where they are, wait. We could open that up and make an interim process, like we did with Mr. Bowman, and we could have that interim, and transition, and open the process up, and still have him as a candidate, and move him that way. And I think, I think you'd find a heartwarming response, an empathy for your position from your workers, because right now, it's so divisive, I can't see your faces, you're looking at what, I just see it, there's just a, there's a casualty, it's just terrible, and it's in a newspaper, and it's all over the place, and so we could bridge that, we could make that happen, and I really respectfully request that you do that, whether you like what I say, or you like me or not, I think that, this is a bigger issue, this is our series, this is our World Series, right here at Petaluma. You know, Branch took it on to make this series happen, he got the rings for his team, and it had a black player in there, it had a just victorious system, it was a leadership position. And, yeah, it was a business, but it was more than a business. So when you say it's a business, it's a new world order business, top-down, we're talking about, we're talking about a sharing, an innovation system that comes, comes from the bottom up, and it meets and joins the top, it's not something that just pushes down, it keeps us all down. So let's look at a different orbit, if it's going to be new, let's make it a different orbit than that sort of, sort of top-down. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Alright, so that'll be the last of the public comments. It's closed. What's that? So, that'll be a bit of a comment. So...
Hey Sue, can we pull these to the bathroom, since that part of the meeting's closed down, and then there won't be any more, we're concerned about cards. If just the long ones are there, then it won't be...
Sure.
Ellen, yeah, sure, okay, yeah, I'm going to write your name on that.
Angie, would you please interpret the next thing I'm going to say? Okay, so we're going to move on to comments from the public on the input, on the search for new superintendent, this is agendized item, so anybody who wants to speak to this agenda can. And we have a translator here, if...
I have a friend right here, I have a couple friends right here from Trans Bay.
Okay, do you want to say it to the whole crowd, or is that, just maybe have them come over, and you can speak with them?
Yeah, well, I'm here to translate anything that you guys require about the agenda, and I have a couple friends here, and if anybody needs translation on this side, or you have...
So both ways, if anybody needs to have it conveyed to us, Angie, would you be happy to do that, or if you need to understand what I'm saying, should we be happy to do that as well? Okay? So, without further ado... We're going to be here for three hours, so I can do the song and count how many people here, divided by three hours, but other people will come in and be able to speak to this agendized item. So, I'm going to start out with five minutes, but if you feel you need a little bit more, I'm not going to, you know, pull the time news real quick, so I'm going to have some latitude, but I've got to be sensitive to how many people are here to speak to the items, so let's just start out on that basis. And so, without further ado, I'll call the first person, Ellen Hathaway.
Good morning, I'm Ellen Hathaway, I live in Petaluma, and I have a daughter at the middle school, and I've been in the community for about 12 years now, and I also formed an executive search company called Envision Search, which I've been doing for about 15 years. I base executives and in low management in Silicon Valley, as well as Nashville. I had an opportunity, I kind of stumbled in a support meeting on Wednesday, and people have been encouraging me to come for years, and I've been involved in a lot of other civic activities, but I decided I'll show up, and it turned out to be an opportune time, since you were discussing the search, which probably is something I know a little bit about, as well as have some feelings about being in the community. I'm sorry for everyone, what we're all going through in terms of the teachers and the disconnect that's happening on both sides, and I hope that, you know, we're able to get through that, because that's what helps everyone, much as the kids, but obviously, parents, the district teachers, the district employees, the property owners, business owners, the schools are the cornerstone of our community. So I wrote up a few things that I'll just go over really quickly, just some observations, as well as some thoughts, as you're conducting the search. I wanted to start by, you know, there was a comment that there are 14 open positions, superintendent positions, in...
Don't we just, we're looking for discussion on criteria?
Right, okay.
Process and final person, but what you would expect, and that could be as creative as you can be, and as...
I can do that.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
So, but, so part of the criteria that you're looking for is going to take you on, and the reason for that is because you want to conduct a wide search, and again, I understand it's not about process, but I am going to just quickly put in a couple of quick things. You don't have to hire an executive search firm, you can hire a valid recruiter, who can help you to identify top passive candidates. They are, it will not be expensive to the board, but putting it out just on post-game, you're only going to, no, sorry.
That was agendized on Tuesday, that's what we talked about, that was the whole point of Tuesday, was how do we do it? This is...
And I actually did not know that at the time, so I apologize for that, and I wasn't able to find that. So in terms of finding the right type of person, you discussed they want to operate like a business, that's what I do for a living, which is to work with businesses, to help them to identify right candidates. Culture is the number-one thing, if you're talking to Google, or Amazon, or any top company that you think of, Pinterest, that's the number-one thing that they look for in a candidate, because on a resume, you assume that you're going to be interviewing someone who has the qualifications on paper for the position, but what you're really looking for is that fit, someone who is going to be able to bring qualities to chance together. And that's really critical when, particularly to this position, and where everyone is at right now, that, and to do that, you need to not only bring together yourselves, but also people who are going to be working for this person. So that is something that's going to set the tone for the person's success, if they will be able to hear what the culture is, and what is, what you're looking for in that person. Really, I mean, Zappos, 10% of their annual income comes from teaching culture to companies around the world, it's not shoes, it's all about how do you, how do you hire an executive that's going to be successful for your company? Because basically, anyone who, if someone loves who they work for, they're going to work harder. If someone doesn't feel that either they have a say in it, or that they don't agree with the approach, they're not, their hearts aren't going to be in it. So I think, you know, from a skills perspective, I think that's really critical. I also think that it's important to perhaps look at people who may not be familiar with Petaluma. Petaluma's changed a lot in the last 10 years, I've been there about 14 years now, and I think it's great to get the old Petaluma's perspective, you know, because I actually grew up in an active community in Connecticut, 1,200 people, I was FFA member, so I, that's what attracted me to come here, but I also like the changing demographics, so, you know, food and movement and whatnot. So I think it's really important to cast a wide net, to be able to attract people to the new Petaluma, and in doing so, when you're developing the criteria of what you're looking for, solicit opinions of people that are part of that new Petaluma. There's a lot of, you know, people involved in the community, the business owners, the, there's so many incredible nonprofits, right, that you can ask, you know, what's important to you in this new supervisor position, as we try to bring everyone together? I'm trying to think, other characteristics, let's see, am I over my time?
Yeah, you can...
Okay.
But maybe, I will tell you on a side note, everybody here, if you do want to talk about process, write to us.
I did.
Yeah, I know, we've got that, it's very well written, by the way.
And I did send your Pedaluma Parents Network emails as well.
Oh, good.
But I just want to encourage all of you, this is one part of it. This agenda's on criteria is one part of it, but if you have any other parts you want to speak to, you, you are free to write to any of us. And, and, you know, make sure we get that information either on our, our emails, send it into our district superintendent, anybody, and it will get passed to the proper, you know.
Yeah, no, your emails are on the website, which is great. And if you want to acknowledge that you received emails, I think that was a long way too, to letting people know that, you know, they've got, that they've been heard, or that it was received, and that's really helpful. Uh, and I do, I tend to provide the email, a lot of information around criteria and skills and how to develop a, um, job description that's not just a standard one, but really helps to make Pedaluma pop. You know, I'm, I'm more than happy to show, you know, how, how do you do that kind of headline and, you know, a superintendent who's really happy in their position, it's like, wow, you know, this is a great job, this is an amazing community. Because we're not like other communities. People are moving here all the time. I mean, it's an amazing place to live and work and raise your kids. And I just think that we can really attract a top person, and I will be happy to help however I can, you know? I mean, I do this for a living, and I'm happy to co-bono, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go with, um, Elizabeth Robertson.
I guess you just have to talk loud, just ask me if there's a mic.
Yeah, I didn't get one either.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Robertson, and I have been a member of this community, both as a teacher and as a citizen of Pedaluma, for eight years now. And I am a music teacher in the district. I have the honor of teaching our younger students at the A-levels, and as well as being a teacher at Pedaluma High School as quarrel director. So I really feel that I've gotten a pulse on what is gonna be best for our kids. And I'm gonna start with the first quality that I feel is important for a superintendent is for them to have both the hard business skills, which I know you value, and the soft education skills. Someone who has been in classrooms, someone who has been in administrative positions at, at a site level, is gonna have a feel for what the stakeholders value, because they've been a lower-level stakeholder. Also, someone who has an understanding of curriculum and instruction, not just what it costs to run a school district, but also what it means to be in the people business of being the head of the school district. We don't sell things. We are in the people business. We are in the business of helping students be ready for future college and career. We're also in the business of making our community members feel welcome and, and being heard as members of this community. So, that takes me to my next criteria item. It is very, very important for whomever becomes our next superintendent to value input first and foremost from students, to be willing to listen to and get ideas from students because they are living their education. And to value input from teachers, classifying members, parents, and other community members. Somebody who is not just gonna listen, but somebody who is going to actually value and be receptive to input from stakeholders. We don't want just, we, we don't need somebody who's just gonna say, uh-huh, uh-huh, I hear you, but somebody who's gonna say, I hear you, let me look into this, and then come back and follow up and say, great, I like this part of the idea, how can we run with it? And third, I want to speak to the fact that this is a very special and unique community here with Pedaluma City Schools. We have programs that are not available anywhere else. We have, I want, someone who's gonna be our next superintendent needs to be excited about those programs, and excited about rolling the unique programs that we have, that in many ways, our community has asked for that. They've made it that through the voting box. We have partial taxes, and we have the new bond issue, bond measure. The next superintendent I'm hoping will be interested in growing programs such as programs in visual performing arts, which by the way, next month, they're going to be meeting at Sacramento to actually start a process of looking into creating a S-FACT test in visual performing arts. That would be as well as history, social studies, as well as some of the other, uh, non-ELA and mathematics subjects. And so we want, we want students to be ready for when those tests come out of type, so growing visual performing arts programs, continuing to celebrate and grow our agriculture and manufacturing technology programs. We have some of the best in country, we are leaders in this. And to value our, and, and to grow our CTE programs. We're, we're gonna start getting less money from the county on that, so having a superintendent who is going to value that and help not get rid of those programs because we're not getting county money, but prioritize through funds that we have available in the district, but also through the LCAP. So thank you so much, I value your listening, and I hope that we choose a superintendent who is gonna be a good fit professionally, culturally, and philosophically. Thank you.
I'd like to call up, um, Angie DeJi.
Good morning, everybody. Um, I'm getting a cold, so I'm gonna do my best to be loud, sorry if I'm a little squeaky. Um, but I have the privilege of speaking this morning on behalf of the elementary principal team. And although we are here to share our hopes and dreams for a superintendent, I think it's important to share just a glimpse of who we are as an elementary team as well. So the seven of us come from various backgrounds, experiences, and geographical regions. However, we are united in so many ways. As a team, we are connected leaders and passionate learners. Today, for example, on a Saturday morning, two of our team members are out of the county continuing their learning. Matthew is in Southern California with his GATE team at a conference, and Fran is in East Bay working hard on her doctorate. Because we just can't seem to get enough of each other, we use Twitter and Voxer as tools to stay connected throughout the week. We ask questions of each other, we learn from one another, we value our teaching and staff members together, and we grow our school communities with enthusiasm. Most importantly, we strive to not only put our students first, but to keep them at the center of all we do, each and every day, even when that means making hard decisions. So this is who we are as a team, and as we network with other educators in our area and beyond, we continue to realize that all elementary admins don't necessarily operate like ours, and none of us can imagine doing this hard work in isolation. After brainstorming our hopes and dreams for our next superintendent, we had a lot of bullet points, thoughts, and ideas on a shared Google Doc. And as was requested of us, we've shared the same blurb, which I'm gonna read for us just in a moment, with our PLA representative, and I know that it either already has been passed on to you, or will be passed on to you for your careful consideration and review. However, I just believe there's something really magical about having a room full of community members, parents, teachers, and leaders on a Saturday morning, so here we are to share our vision. The K-6 elementary team, admin team, is seeking a dynamic, inspiring, student-centered superintendent with a clear vision. It is our hope that our new superintendent will be a strong communicator, a connected leader and learner, and is able to bring excitement and enthusiasm to the district. We would prefer a leader who has classroom experience, as well as both elementary and secondary leadership experience. Investment in our community is critical, and knowledge and daily interaction with technology is a non-negotiable for 2015. If we get really lucky, finding someone who has experience with a one-to-one rollout, GATE, or Google Apps for Education accounts, a budget with a district of our size, and forward-thinking learning and professional development structures, that would be absolutely outstanding. Thank you all so much, and have a fabulous weekend.
Thank you.
Hey, Amy. Would you mind if I took that one? Is it exactly what you're saying?
I don't mind, it has a little pink writing on it. You can have it. There you go. And I'll send, I'll send you a clean one.
Seeing the, uh, the beginnings of a pattern here, um, Amy Turco. Amy Show.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Amy Turco, I'm a fourth grade teacher at Big Bear Elementary. I also am the mother of a graduate of Pedaluma High School, who's now in his junior year at UC Santa Barbara with a political science major. Um, I'm on a lot of levels in the district, I'm on a lot of committees, um, I'm on a lot of, involved in many things at my school. Uh, I have, this is my second school district that I've been in, very different, I'm so happy to be at Pedaluma, I wouldn't wanna be anywhere else. Uh, I have some thoughts about the qualifications for a new superintendent. We need a superintendent whose experience in the classroom is not a distant memory. Someone with substantial knowledge of the application of best practices in the classroom, in the classroom. Someone who is aware of the physical, emotional, and intellectual needs of students, because they've actually attempted to meet those needs, sometimes 30, 50, or 100 different students in a day. Our new superintendent should be able to communicate those needs to the school board. They should be unafraid to open up the communication channels by being transparent and collaborate in budgeting and decision-making with all PCS staff, teachers, and families. Very importantly, our new superintendent should be wise enough to make the single most important long-term investment that a school district can give, and that has the greatest yield, and that is quality teachers. A good superintendent will model best practices of management, also the best practices in the classroom, creativity, collaboration, communication, and hopefully consensus building. The superintendent would welcome all PCS community members into important decision-making processes. They would honor the trust agreement. Finally, our new superintendent needs to be tech-savvy, but only willing to invest in durable goods. They need to be management-savvy and be aware that the top-down decision-making business model yields only extremely low morale. I am hopeful this new superintendent is out there polishing up their resume as we speak, and I'm hopeful that they will want to come to PCS.
Sharon Morton.
Good morning, board. My first, I'm probably a toky grandma, that's my highest qualification. Um, I've lived here for nine years, I have two kids in school now, elementary and middle, and a kindergarten heading toward mid-year in the fall. My background is as an educator. Um, I've worked for three different school districts, five different county offices. Most of my background is in professional development, or focused on curriculum instruction and assessment. I have worked as a consultant up until last year, um, actively involved in school improvement in large urban districts and small rural districts. I come with kind of selfish agenda that I believe each one of you, and I've met several of you, believe in the value of students. Um, I've worked with a numerous of teachers, districts, I came in the county, I was an administrative trainer for CSLA. I've worked on-site collaboration for the last 15 years, meeting with teacher meetings every day, usually over a period of three to five years, in every district, we've seen significant improvement. Um, and maintain the piece that I believe is important to look for in a superintendent, is we need someone who understands the systems of leadership, who can, um, come in with a, a clear vision, but a flexible posture. Someone who understands that although there may be contract negotiations focused on, on adults, that students have to be at the heart of everything we do. I want someone to be with an awareness of what this new world is. We want excellence, but we also need accountability. We need access for all of our kids, but that has to come with support, not just setting the bar so high that, that some of our children are left out, or have to sweep by under that bar. They need the support to climb the ladder, all of our children, on both sides of the freeway. Um, I believe that we need, um, expectations and support and awareness of change, but I also believe in a superintendent, we need someone who's aware of the bigger world, what are effective practices, not trends. What is timely data? What is PLC? I can do it since before the divorce. Um, what does it really look like when you walk out of a room and say, based on what we just saw about our kids, we are willing to commit to collaboratively taking this plan and coming back? And how is that modeled from a superintendent position down through all multiple layers? And I think that's critical. Um, there are some things that we, to as educators, can say, this works. Um, and how do we build the trust and the community, um, to not just come in and say, well, because we've always done it this way, we have tradition and precedent, I believe that that's the kind of thing you want to build on, not rest on. When we have accomplishments that we have in place, as you do in Pedaluma, which drew me, as well as Grant here, um, you gotta build on these accomplishments and not become reactive to the next political mandate, or the next, uh, crunch out of Washington, or the next wave of demographics that might change. We have to be proactive, we have to be out and have a superintendent who is modeling with filters, not grabbing the next gold ring that comes along, but what works for kids, and keeping that focus there. I want someone with experience, that does not mean age, that means someone who can cite examples and evidence of, I know what it looks like when parents come in, in an uproar. I know what it looks like when teachers are upset about something. And I have an open door and an open ear, but I am probably not going to compromise students first. That's got to be one of the abiding filters of a good systemic leader. What am I here to die on the hill for? And how am I aware of the global world these children are moving into? Because it's not the world I knew. And I don't care if I'm 27, or in my case, moving from 67. It's a different world, and we need one eye on what that looks like, but not a waver eye, someone who can, can steady the ship and build the community. I, I believe in someone who focuses on results, and actions, and commitment, um, not checking off, well, we meet once a month, or we meet once a week. It's not the checklist, it's the process that leads to action and commitment. And I'm a witness of saying, I've seen it not work in far too many places. And in the rare places where it does work, everybody wants to come, be a part of it, and watch the children thrive, because it works. And it's, it's beyond the debates of common core, it's about someone who can hold on to those filters, I've been around long enough, that it will wait for common core, for content standards. There are waves always coming. How do you keep it focused on what's best for kids, aware of the adults that feed our children? So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathy Brule. I hope I said that correctly.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Brule, Junior High. I've been in the district for fifteen years. My son went through public schools as well. What I'm looking for in a superintendent is really twofold. One, we need an educational leader. We need someone who's been in the classroom, who has been an administrator, who knows what it means to be an adult in the classroom, providing for the needs of kids. And these are kids, whether they're kids who are struggling or are gifted kids, so that all of our kids are being served to the best possible end. And I would like someone who is common core savvy and tech savvy, and that they actually know the true intent of the standards, and that they know how to apply technology, and that they also realize that technology is a piece and it's a tool, and it's not the end-all, the-all. I need someone who's willing to hop on board with us, someone who's going to recognize that we are a district who is well on the way to implementing the common core, that we have a lot of outstanding, long-term teachers, and that we have a plan that's already in place. I don't need somebody to come in and with a new plan. We need somebody who is going to join us and support us where we are now and help us get to be where we want to be. We need someone who's going to help us develop a common vision of who we want to be and where we want to be in the future. I would like an inspirational leader, someone who's going to inspire me, encourage me to continue on my path that I have chosen, and encourage me to be a lifelong learner. I need someone who will make decisions based on educational soundness, what is best for kids, not what is necessarily most cost-effective or most popular at the moment. We need a district leader who is going to unite the district, school to school, district office to schools and staff, boards to school and staff, and earn the trust of the staff. We need someone who will view teachers as colleagues, not adversaries, treat us professionally in our work and at the bargaining table, be willing to address inequities that have been brought forward and help us come to a common resolution. We need someone who will understand that educational institutions do not function like business and can't be effectively run on a business model. Our business is education, our business is kids. We need someone who can understand and be willing to use shared decision-making as was intended. We need someone who's willing to stand up for teachers and to stand with teachers to uphold our standards and the expectations we have, and make decisions based on what is right, not less controversial or cost-effective. And we need someone who will work with integrity and professionalism. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did write this in yellow. I didn't have that.
No big one.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, Brett Newell.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having this meeting on Saturday and to promote maximum participation. Also, thank you for having the Spanish translator here for families that are on illegal Spanish speakers. I especially want to thank this for going into service over the years. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to join the comments made by the elementary school principals. They made some excellent points about the qualities of a superintendent. And I think the one thing that I would like to add is that we have the wonderful privilege of having this community and the teachers who are talented and working so hard, along with the administrative staffs at schools, you know, what I see every year, where my children look on, as a family, you know, from Ascarby to the teachers, they all work together to promote the interests and the education of the students, and that's their primary goal. So I think from a superintendent's perspective, what is truly most important is the ability to work with teachers, administrative staff, and parents to advance our children's interest. And to do that, not just looking at the immediate year or fiscal quarter, but looking long-term, and how we can build that, what makes Pedaluma, City Schools special, and your school special, to build that. We have some significant challenges coming up in the future, economic challenges facing teachers, and the ability to attract and retain our talented teachers. It's going to take some very savvy, long-term leadership and only a merciful. That's all.
Thank you. Loretta Chris Morgan.
Hello. You don't have to work on a microphone for me. So you guys know why I'm here. It's a really short list. A lot of people have said a lot of wonderful things. I too think it's great that you guys are doing this so people can come out. One of my questions is, will the next superintendent be on a negotiating team? If so, it'd be great if they had experience. People have already given a lot of qualities. The ones that I would hope we look for are fair, respectful, experienced, and well-versed in people skills. That's it. Short to the point.
You may lead the league in revenue. How are you, Beth? Oh.
I like how we're getting on a personal basis here. Well, everyone who has spoken has already said things so well. So I'd just like to emphasize three key overarching points for myself. One would be that our superintendent would be someone who has a vision for our district, and that that vision is based on an in-depth understanding of both child development and best educational practices. Because I think we have a challenge in our district, we have a district that covers all the way from transitional kindergarten up through senior high school, and how being able to be a person who can understand both ends of that spectrum is a complex job. Another thing is I'd like a superintendent with proven leadership skills, which foremost would include the ability to collaborate and bring consensus from diverse output, or input I should say, or whatever. Anyway, you're going to get a lot of opinions, and figuring out how to hear those, and not only hear those, but react to them and make meaningful change, I think is critical. And finally, I would like a superintendent who has extensive experience in the classroom. Because I think really having the opportunity to work hands-on with the kids on a daily basis is critical to understanding my needs. So, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Doug Evans.
Yeah, my name is Doug Evans. I've been a teacher around here for, I guess, twenty-eight, twenty-nine years. For Denverin as a teacher there. I've been Teacher of the Year. I've been through four superintendents now, and we're on the next one. I just had some, I gave my talk before and mentioned Mr. Riki. I'll probably refer to him again. Thank you for hearing this, and thank you, everybody. It's nice to see some former Sonoma County Board members, and some great farmers here too, who have been participatory. And don't get recognized often by our school board, who come up in classrooms, classrooms go out with them every day. You need to start recognizing some of these people in the community. Edom Reed, thank you for being here. Mr. Peterson. Now, I do have something on here now, which I liked before, and so it's a new chapter. And I'd like to say a couple of things about what I'd like to, I would personally and professionally like to see in this new chapter. I won't take too much time, I hope. And I'll try to speak loudly, because there's probably about three-quarters of a million dollars of technology here at this school. Ms. Rutter can probably clarify that. But we still don't have a microphone. We don't have one at the board meetings. We don't want to hear. So I apologize, especially to the Spanish translator.
I'm just saying, we do have a microphone, and Ms. Rutter offered it up, but the acoustics are here where I haven't had trouble hearing anybody.
Does anybody have trouble hearing at all? Does anybody have? Okay. Well, maybe it's just me, then I'm a little older, and you know, I'm glad you're young and have great ears. I hope you hear this. You know, past actions are often a great predictor of future behaviors. And so, when we look for a superintendent, I hope we do it evidence-based, and we don't just, we don't just take the word for it. Now, every teacher knows that as you move up on your path away from the child, you get away from kids, and you kind of get away from, well, you just kind of become a little more insular, whether it happens by chance or by choice. And we want to make sure that we keep, we keep, you know, right there on the ground. We want to make sure we're connected, we're on the ground. In fact, in kindergarten, I'd like to see a new superintendent be on the ground with kindergartners, maybe every couple of months, spending that time eye to eye with a kindergartener on, we don't have a clipboard, but coming in and being one-on-one with kids, right there, taking that class for an hour, hour and a half. Usually you go and maybe do a little prepper, do a little something extra, so that that superintendent understands, like several principals in here, that they sit in once in a while to act clipboard, and say, why don't you, could you, why don't you just go and prepare a little something? You know, I know you're working on a technology presentation for staff development, and they give you a release time, why don't you go do that right now, and I'll take your class? I got a little something. In fact, I got an aquarium with some craft in it. I'm going to bring it in and do this with it. And that's the kind of person who's on the ground and takes in what the experience is with all those wonderful figures that we see here. So all those, Juan, Juanita, Lupita, all of, all kids that are here in this district, and they know their names. So it becomes a bigger family. It becomes your family, and you're not just giving a pin up on the stage once in a while, not really knowing that teacher, and definitely not knowing those kids out there. You want to be clear and really understand who these people are, all of them. It's a team, the kids, the teachers, the principals, it's a team we're working with again. And it's, you know, goes back to the Ricky era and how that all takes place. We want evidence-based. We don't want to just get a letter from their nearest colleague who is saying, yeah, they've been really great here, but we can't wait to get a little, something going on. Because as everybody in here knows, there are administrative circuits. There's one to Ross, one to Sonoma, they come back, they do their, you know, whatever. They go over to Sonoma, they come back, they go up to Sebastopol, close schools, they come back, and they apply. There might be some here, I don't know. They're good people, but you know, they, it's just, it's very uncomfortable when these things happen, and they leave, and then they come back as a higher order. And I hope that we really make sure that we put out a clean search, we make sure that these folks are, there's evidence-based, there's details that we know that these people have integrity.
We're back on criteria, so if I-
Integrity. Integrity is, that's number one. Thank you.
It gets close to the time, but I take, from what you just said, you're not someone that's not out there oscillating between districts, so we're looking for someone who's got some stick power.
That's right. That's right. Integrity, so they don't leave here, they don't come back in a higher order, if they leave with integrity, that they're going to come back, that's integrity. I would like to make sure that there is evidence for inspiring teachers, and making sure that there's innovations that have brought participatory governance, that there is industriousness in bringing people together, there's new ways of organizing, and new ways of modeling, that these people are, this person is a model in all ways of education, of team-building, of teaching, and of governance, so that there is respect, and mutual respect of these people, with the teachers and their workers. I'm not just talking about workers, a teacher, I'm talking about a worker as a custodian or anybody, assistant, if I'm a little assistant, or anybody else. I also want to make sure that they're motivating, that they induce a motivation in teachers and wants you to come to work. Right now, teachers are really having a hard time coming to work. It's tough. They don't want to work here. They don't want to work at their own site. We want to make sure that there's motivation and inspiration to come. We want transparency, we want a person who is transparent and opens it up, opens the line item budget up, opens everything to, for us to see and understand. It's not just an open-door policy, you go in and you say what you do, but there's not a lot of listening going on. We want somebody who listens, so there's transparency there, and they mean what they say, that they're committed to a consensus model, a consensus model, not a top-down model, but a consensus, that there's consensus building, so that you don't end up with a fracturing this chasm we were talking about earlier, where I was. And that we have this kind of, a greater capacity for using a consensus model, and it's not just one leader making a decision. We want to make sure there's a culture of compassion and empathy, that this is a family. Families go through disputes, but they don't, they don't separate quite so much as this one does. Often, they come back together and they meld, and they go through some sort of rebuilding, and that's what we need to do. So I hope we have one, we build and rebuild, because we had one about a long time ago, when I first started here, a sense of compassion and empathy for each other, between leadership and workers. So I hope that that evidence base is clear, that we make sure that wherever they're coming from, that their experiences are true and honest, and that they bring something to us that will rebuild what I think we once had, and we travel ourselves again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I think we'll go one more, and then we'll give everybody a break, and then we'll take five or ten minutes if he says so. Maybe everyone's got to stretch their legs, use the restroom, grab water and coffee, whatever. Okay, so let's do one more, and then we'll take a little break. So that would be Sandra Larson.
I feel like I'm getting right before this. Sandra Larson, secondary teacher. I too am a grad student. First thing, I think that your superintendent has to have been not just a teacher, but a competent, good teacher. They need to have been an administrator, but a competent, well-respected administrator. You can't judge competency in others if you aren't confident in yourself. So I would say, I would add on to that. Second, they have to be a leader with a clear vision, as we've said, someone who can come into a room and make everyone feel heard and respected. And that's a really hard thing, skill set, to find in a person. I would say that. We need a leader again who brings us all together. We're desperate for that. So that would be my only, I'll be brief, so we can have recess.
Well, with that being said, we will take that. Let's just, let's see, we'll come back at, I think, twenty-four. I think ten minutes. We'll come back at twenty-five out. I'd like to have everybody get back to their seats and go ahead and continue. So we're going to go ahead and call up our next speaker, will be Kim Sharpe.
Good morning. I'll try to have this last one just. Luckily, I do have a teacher voice, so hopefully that's a year, and we will all grow this one. I'm here representing a whole bunch of teachers. Although every board meeting that I do address you, I start with my background and all the hats that I wear in this community. I am a parent of two boys that are in our school system. I live here in town. I teach at Casparia High School. This is my twenty-second.
They go over to Sonoma, they come back, they go up to Sebastopol, close schools, they come back. And they apply, you know, some of them here, I don't know. They're good people, but, you know, they, it's just, it's very uncomfortable when these, these things happen and they leave and then they come back as a higher order. And I, I hope that we really make sure that we put out a clean search. We make sure that these, these folks are, there's evidence-based, there's details that we know that these people have integrity.
We're back on criteria, so if I...
Integrity, integrity is, that's number one. Okay. Thank you.
It gets close to the time, but I take, from what you just said, you're not someone that's not out there oscillating between districts. So we're looking for someone who's got some stick power.
That's right. Integrity, so they don't leave here, they don't come back in a higher order. If they leave with integrity, that they're gonna come back, that's integrity. Uh, I would like to make sure that there is evidence for inspiring teachers and making sure that there's innovations that have brought participatory governance, that there is industriousness in bringing people together. There's new ways of, of organizing and new ways of modeling that these people are, this person is a model in all ways of education, of team-building, of teaching, uh, and, and, and of governance. So that there is respect and mutual respect of these people, these people, with, with the teachers and their workers. I'm not just talking about workers, a teacher. I'm talking about a worker as a custodian or anybody, as a assistant, my little assistant or anybody else. I also want to make sure that they're motivating, that they, they induce a motivation in teachers and wants you to come to work. Right now, teachers are really having a hard time coming to work. It's tough. They don't want to work here. They don't want to work at their own site. We want to make sure that there's motivation and inspiration to come. We want transparency. We want a person who's transparent and opens it up. Opens the line item budget up, opens everything to, for us to see and understand. It's not just an open door policy, you go in and you say what you do, but there's not a lot of listening going on. We want somebody who listens. So there's transparency there and they mean what they say. That they're committed to a consensus model, a consensus model. Not a top-down model, but a consensus, that there's consensus building so that you don't end up with a fracturing this chasm we were talking about earlier, where I was. And that, um, we have this kind of, um, a greater capacity for it using a consensus model. Uh, it's not just one leader making a decision. Um, we want to make sure there's a culture of compassion and empathy, that this is a family. Families go through disputes, but they don't, they don't separate quite so much as this one does. Often they, they come back together and they meld and they go through some sort of rebuilding. And that's what we need to do. So I hope we have one, we build and rebuild, because we had one about a long time ago, when I first started here, a, a, a sense of compassion and empathy for, for, uh, for each other between leadership and workers. So I hope that that, uh, that evidence base is clear, that we make sure that wherever they're coming from, that their experiences are true and honest and that they bring something to us that will rebuild what I think we once had and we travel ourselves again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Um, I think we'll go one more and then we'll give everybody a break. We'll take a five or 10 minutes if he says so. Maybe everyone's got to stretch their legs, use the restroom, grab water and coffee, whatever. Okay, so let's, let's do one more and then we'll take a little break. So that would be Sandra Larson.
I feel like I'm getting right in front of this. Sandra Larson, secondary teacher. I too am a grade 11. Um, the first thing, I think that your superintendent has to have been not just a teacher, but a competent, good teacher. They need to have been an administrator, but a competent, well-respected administrator. You can't judge competency in others if you aren't confident in yourself. So I would say, I would add on to that. Um, the second, they have to be a leader with a clear vision, as we've said. Someone who can come into a room and make everyone feel very respected. And that's a really hard thing, skill set to find in a person. I would say that. We need a leader again who brings us all together. We're desperate for that. So that would be my only, I'll be brief, so we can have recess.
Well, that being said, we will take that. Let's just, let's see, we'll come back at, um, how many? I think 10 minutes, we'll come back at 25 out. I'd like to have everybody get back to their seats and go ahead and continue. So we're gonna go ahead and call up our next speaker, will be Kim Sharpe.
Good morning. I'll try to have this last one as possible, please. Um, luckily I do have a teacher voice, so hopefully guys can hear me and I'll go around this one. Uh, I'm here representing a whole different version of teachers. Um, although every board meeting that I do address you, I start with, um, my background and all the hats that I wear in this community. Um, I am a parent of two boys that are in our school system. Um, I live here in town. I teach at Casco Grande High School. This is my 22nd year teaching, um, and still going. Um, and I'm also the president of the Federation. And I do that in order because that's, that's where my heart is. Um, even though when I first started teaching, I didn't live in Petaluma, that was my dream. Cause I worked here and I wanted to raise my children here. I wanted them to go to school here. Um, and so beyond that, um, that's why I always try to separate which hat I'm wearing. I have to do that at school too, my partner hat, my own hat, me and my. So, um, I know Troy, that you had asked us to, um, get information from our members because we have such a wide group. We have lots that are parents, um, as well as teachers. Uh, we were also asked to extend our survey deadline and I know that you guys are on a tight deadline as we all are. But I really felt it was important to extend it so that people could really in time to think, formulate their ideas. Um, so I have for each of you, um, I emailed actually this morning the results, I hope you saw them.
They are.
Okay. So we also, um, put packets together for you, um, Harry Cohn and I were furiously. So anyway, so I have a packet, I wanted to tell you, one is the, um, teacher packet and then one is the parent community packet. So, um, there was also a couple of individual emails that came to me outside of the survey that I wanted to be those important pieces as well. Um, as the Federation president, I would hope that when we are looking for the search, for the next superintendent, that, um, we hold the ideals of what makes this district great. Um, our trust agreements, the shared decision-making piece of it as, as the forefront, that collaboration, as I spoke at the last board meeting, that collaboration, that working together, that feeling together is what's going to make our great district incredible. Um, we need to have all constituents, which is what the Trust Supreme talks about, involved in this. Um, and so I just wanted to kind of put that plug in. And that's really all I have because I think what I have to hand you is gonna save it.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so our next speaker will be Laura Bradley.
Good morning. I think we all have to come off right now. Um, thank you so much for opening this up for us this morning. It's so much, well, a little bit easier on a Saturday morning than a Monday morning. Um, my name's Laura Bradley. I teach English and digital media at Penner High School. Um, I'm a product of Petaluma Schools, starting in 1968 at Grant County Primary School. Um, and I started teaching middle school in Sonoma in 1988. So that was long for standards and, um, we had to use typewriters then. I've seen a lot of changes in education over the years, as well as I've worked for many, many administrators. Um, someone in our site likes to say, teachers remember you're here forever, administrators come and go. And so, um, that's an important thing for me to, to have understood over the years because there is a lot of change in administration. Uh, my colleagues have said a lot of the same things as I plan to say. And so as an English teacher, I tell my students, I need to be specific, give me an example. So I'm just gonna share a couple of examples of what I've seen in standing administration and educational leadership to help communicate what I hope to see in a superintendent. Um, in my early, what I call my baby years of teaching, I had no clue what I was doing and I had middle school kids and they were frightening. And my principal, this was over in Sonoma, came into my classroom and sat and watched and then spent time with me after school to fine-tune my lessons. And that was powerful educational leadership. Um, I came over to Penner in 2001. Dave Rose was the principal at the time. And in 2004, I said, I would like to pursue National Board Certification, which is a pretty, um, laborious and difficult process. Um, Dave supported that by coming into my classroom and filming my lessons because I had to have, uh, videotape what I was doing. Um, and so he was in my room often and when parents would come to him, he could speak with knowledge and authority about what happened in my classroom. Was it based on rumor or what he supposed happened? He knew because he was there in my classroom. Um, National Board Certification is only good for 10 years. And so last year I went through the process again and recertified with a lot of help from, support from Emily Dunigan, her principal now. Um, in 2009, I pursued a master's degree in educational technology and again, great support from Emily Dunigan. She recognized, she saw what I was doing with technology in my classroom and she said, uh, would you create a new course for our students in digital media? Um, I have never worked harder for a principal than I did for those principals who honored my professionalism, the ones who were in my classroom, the ones who said, you're really good at this, would you please do this? Um, I've never worked harder than I have for Dave and for Emily Dunigan because they honored my professionalism. Um, if students are our number one priority, which I believe they are, then we need leadership that honors and recognizes the professionalism of the people who spend all day, every day with those students. Um, teachers are professionals. We make incredibly difficult decisions all day, every day. We're constantly making decisions based on the students in front of us and the curriculum that we have, the resources that we have. And so, uh, most valuable to me is educational leadership that recognizes that I am a professional and that I'm an expert in my field and that my opinions matter and my work conditions matter so much that we're the ones with the kids every day. So that would be very important to me. Uh, and someone made a good point that it's like we're all new teachers right now because of new standards, technology, it's the, the biggest changes we've ever seen in education are happening right now. Um, and it's like we're all new teachers, so we can't go to the experienced teacher down the hall and get help. So it's critical that our educational leadership understands that, that this is an unbelievably difficult, at the same time, the most exciting time to be in the classroom. I'm so glad I stuck around long enough to get here because this is an incredibly exciting time, but so difficult. And we need our administration to understand that, to prioritize what we're asked to do. So that we're not asked to do things that just add to our stress, that the support we get from the administration helps us tackle these incredibly difficult working situations right now. That's it.
Thank you, Laura. Tom Joy.
Thank you. My name is Tom Joy. Retired from the Petaluma City Schools after 40 some years. All of which began at this very school, McDonald's.
Welcome back, though.
Thank you. I had to rewrite, as you can see, my comments, as pithy and good as they are. They really talked about process, which I quite frankly think you still haven't gotten. It might have to be like Garrett Morris saying it again and louder. But I do thank you for this opportunity to look at the qualities and characteristics of your candidate. You're going to impact, as you know, 7,493 students and at least 878 staff members, which reminds me, a leg move just a second. Reminds me of a saying from Les Meyer, when people said to Les, former superintendent, Leslie Meyer, Les, how many people work in the district? He would reply, most of them. I commend you for creating this forum for citizens to offer insight, opinion regarding the candidates. And, uh, my comments relate to the section, selection process, and really I'm saying, don't stop now. You need to find a candidate who is capable of dealing with an open process, capable of bringing the, the selection team to her or his district and saying, don't walk about, talk to the people. Surprise, some things happen, and that's happened. I would urge you to embrace and engage and form the successful candidate, to embrace and engage and form success, uh, productive relationships, with everybody from our English learners, our minority youth, cops, boys and girls, kids. All of those people can and should be a vital part of the selection process. They need to hear and see these candidates come forward. And again, that's a small hammer that means confidence with the board.
Straying in a selection, you're on a different criteria.
I would be away from that. But we want that successful candidate to be able to embrace and form productive relationships. And it takes more than email, text and Twitter these days because it can never replace the question, can we have a talk? Can we go to a talk? Can we go for a walk? Well, I cannot ask you to embrace a business model, though I guess I've heard my employer's great fine, that that is a new order. I do have a belief in shared decision-making that actually goes to Honda Motor Company, the end of World War II. Honda Motor Company employed W. Edward Demings from the United States, professor, who has revolutionized Honda's way of creating quality automobiles through quality circles. Another manifestation of shared decision-making. And the ability that the candidate will be able to work with the tools of the past to work on improving the future. The tools of the past, perhaps the cumbersome trust agreement that was hammered out long ago. Seems to have been discarded to some degree. There is not the passion about it. So the successful candidate will be able to work on those kinds of elements, throw in a way and create a new one. There are new labor, there are new representative groups in the, uh, employee ranks and the ability to work with all of them. Shared decision-making is not always tidy, in fact, it's at times messy. But we want somebody who can find results with sufficient buy-in to succeed. In closing, I noticed the district's motto for decades, "Diversitas intra unitata", has fallen from favor, probably because a lot of people didn't know what it meant. Well, in fact, it's even fallen off the letter yet. Quite simply, the phrase means diversity within unity. If there's ever a time to embrace the notion of greater unity in a time of increasing diversity, it is now in the springtime of 2015. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, fellas. Sharon Stagman.
Good morning. Thank you for having us, appreciate it. I'm a parent in the community and I've lived here since 2000. I have two children, one goes to the, uh, Penner Junior High and went across the market. And I'm also a teacher in Novato, neighboring town. And I've been teaching there, um, for 14 years. So I have a perspective on caring as well as a teacher, as many people here have that experience too, administration. I do, um, appreciate the principal's talk. She represented the principals, I agree wholeheartedly with everything she was saying, as well as Elizabeth, the music teacher. And, um, my perspective is very similar. I do think that the superintendent needs to have good teaching experience. Good, as someone else has specified, good, quality teaching experience. Because they don't want to visit the classrooms, be a part of the children's life. They have to know what teacher we go for. And as a teacher, we do deal with many different children, different populations, ethnicities, values, situations. And it's a, it's a hard life, I like it. And it's really important that the superintendent supports the teachers with best practices of teaching, having the money so we can go to workshops and send them ours to become better teachers, having the funds, being a good negotiator with union reps, as well as teachers and their parents, being a good person with soft skills, which is so crucial now with technology. We still need the soft skills. We still need to be able to teach our children how to debate, how to talk in front of a panel, how to communicate, how to have a job that should be successful, how to be a good citizen. And the superintendent is the leader of all of that. We have the super, the principals, the teachers, the parents, the students. And the superintendent needs to keep in mind what's important for all of those people, especially the students and teachers. They are in the trenches, so to speak. The teachers know those students so well, they are with them for six, eight hours, six hours a day. We, we know them so well, we know what's important for them to learn. We know technology is important, we also know handwriting is so important. We know math computation is so important, not just on iPad or computer. They need to know how to add, subtract, compute or cancel, mental math is important also. So a superintendent needs to know, by visiting classrooms and known as a good teacher here she was, those important things when they visit a classroom, when they visit a school site and talk to that principals in charge of that site. One other note before I leave, finish talking. Um, I, I teach in Novato and we are looking for superintendent also. I know that the word is, what's the, what's the hurry? My concern is, yes, Novato's competitive, Marin has more money. Uh, the superintendent who was leaving, uh, requested four years ago when she was hired, quite a high salary, and then gave it to her, simply because she passed. I don't know your salary cap and how that works here, but money is a consideration, as you probably know, that could make a regular deal with somebody. Unfortunately, money does make the world go around. It's a consideration. Um, I don't know the timeframe exactly for when we need to hire somebody. But I know Novato is just like a search firm. I don't know if that is laudable or maybe not helping them as much. And I know, I do appreciate this three-hour forum because Novato's only having one hour with the parents on Thursday night. So I think this is fabulous that more people can come and be heard. And thank you very much for it.
Thank you. Leslie Ira.
Mine was just to have on a cheat.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Um, Blair Kellison.
He's not here yet, he's coming back.
Oh, circulated, yeah. Ray, did you want to speak or were you just submitting a call?
Yes, I'll speak first.
Oh, both of you up here. Sorry, I'll let her go first, Ray.
Is that okay?
Gentlemen, Liam, yeah, trained them well.
Wasn't a while.
So let me, it's Adam Ray Peterson.
Okay, uh, I have, I have a background in teaching, uh, like credential elementary education and like credential K through 12 and special ed. And I've been in my years of service, now I'm retired. Our three children graduated from Petaluma High. Our six out of our eight grandchildren graduated from the Petaluma High School District. And now we have a great grandchild that's gonna be coming up through Petaluma's district. So I have invested interest in seeing that this school district moves forward and in a great, wonderful way it has been. Um, one of the best programs that this district has is the ag program. And I, I want a superintendent that respects that. A superintendent that will show up at the event that the ag program has, that they just, doesn't just think about it in the district office, but goes to the dinners, to go, you know, when I see a superintendent out there talking to the parents and the students, I know they're part of the team. And it's a team job and I want a superintendent that's a team participant, that, that works together. I have worked under superintendents that were like that. And I've also worked with superintendents that it was highway or the highway and I was glad to see them take the highway down. And by the way, um, when, uh, the worst superintendent, one of the worst superintendents I worked under, uh, when he took her job down the road, uh, he called, uh, not he, the district that was hiring him, called the, uh, president, the teacher she was in. And she told me, that she said, I gave him a good recommendation. him a good recommendation so we could get rid of him. So, be careful. Watch what you ask. I mean, sometimes, you know. Anyway, that's your guys' job. They want a superintendent that respects the idea of a marketable education, a marketable skill is what I meant, not just an education. When a student graduates from high school, if he or she has a marketable skill, they can want either support themselves and go along, you know, with everything, or, and when I say everything, maybe to support their college education. My husband and I had marketable skills. He had better marketable skills because he was in a program that taught him how to work with his hands. I didn't have as good a marketable skills, and I got the last skill, but I did work in the college library. We have to work our way through college. A lot of students have to work their way through college. The high school system doesn't give them marketable skills, they won't be able to work their way through college if they're a college bum. The ag program at Petaluma High is a great program, and we want a superintendent to support that. Casa Grande has some excellent programs that have worldwide known dish hatchery. We're so proud of that, and we've got to keep it going. We want the superintendent to go to the United Angels Dinner. We want a superintendent that gets out there and sees these programs, goes, puts their feet on the ground, looks at everything that's happening, not just in the high schools, the elementary school. We have some marvelous programs down in elementary and junior high. We've got to hire a superintendent that gets out there and looks at them and sees what they're doing, and like many people I said today, visits the classrooms, because that's important. It's not just the desk in the district office. It's get out there, looks on the ground as they keep staying on the dunes. That's what we need. Hope you guys pick the right guy.
Ray, Ray Peterson?
Good morning, and thank you for having this forum and spending your Saturday out here to make Petaluma a better place. Steve, thanks for your career and your support. I am Ray Peterson, and I come to you with a lot of baggage that I'm just going to focus on a very narrow figure of that. I'm a fifth-generation Sonoma County ag family, the sixth and seventh generation of a family that gone through your school, and as Deborah just said, the eighth is about to begin. When I left high school, I didn't have anything but a marketable skill, barely passed English with all those D's, but I have earned master's degree. What I left high school with was vocational education allowed me to enter into the tech world and compete with people coming out of the military. Thirty-three years later, I retired as an executive in the tech industry. We need a superintendent that understands all students don't learn the same way. Some of you learn by listening to people talk and reading books, others of us do not. I was very, very fortunate in that woodshop was not a thrill when I went to elementary or junior high school, and that's where I learned fractions. Many students will never learn math in math class. Why in the world is half of a half a quarter? Doesn't make any logical sense. The people who have to understand a concrete concept before they can go out to the abstract. When you try and put a quarter-inch dowel in the center of a one-inch board so you can line two of them up and attach them, suddenly, oh, a half of a half is a quarter. Then you can take it. You know, one of the things that really riles me when I listen to people talk about vocational education, they'll say, well, we've got to use this part to go to college. Well, it isn't that they're not college bound. It isn't that they've got a lesser IQ. We measure IQ by what you can memorize. And those of us who don't memorize well need to have logical steps to do it. So having hands-on education is not just necessary for students to be able to work with their hands and be in the industry necessarily. It's also necessary for some students to be able to make it through higher education. So I leave you with a concept that you need a superintendent who understands that, and I thank Steve for his support of that. And of course, with LCFF, in the past, we had dedicated funds. You still have those funds. They're just in a loaf there that you can spend however you want with the input of the community and whatever. So they're there. You just have to find a way to make them into the right priority. I would hope you have a superintendent that does get out and look at things. You know, I think one of the most difficult tasks I've learned as a manager and executive was how to recognize the input you get from people. You can't, as a manager, ever accomplish anything yourself. You've got to find someone. When you have that idea, you've got to find someone who has a passion for that idea and who can do it. So you need a leader who is able to find those people that have a passion for that. So I'm going to sit down and be quiet, and think you've heard a whole lot of good information and input, but I want to leave you with one additionally that came to my mind. I did spend my years on the board of the California School Lords Association and president of the California County Boards. One of the most important thing they have is the masters in governance, and I really hope you get a superintendent that recognizes there are six of you who must build that vision for the school district, and one of you who you're going to select who's going to carry that out, carry out that vision and make it. We've got real trouble in River City. Petaluma has some great distinctions, but it also has a distinction for having the highest drug and alcohol abuse amongst our youth. That's a bad thing to have, and we need a superintendent that recognizes that and recognizes that there are ways to avoid that besides hammers and clinics to dry them out. One of the proudest times of my life was the first management job I ever had. As a sixth grader, marching those three fifth graders down to the intersection to protect all those little kids. You know, I was given the ability to accept responsibility as a sixth grader. Some or another, we've got a system today that thinks you stay a little kid until you're 20 or 18 or whatever age, and then suddenly you're going to start accepting responsibility. That doesn't work. Respect and responsibility has to start at a young age. I hope you have a superintendent that respects the students enough to allow them to accept responsibility and selects a staff that will be able to say. Thank you very much. End of survey.
Laura, who was this one? Laura Imel?
Buenos dias. Yo soy Laura Imel, and I am a parent. I have a kid here at McDowell and another one at Casa Grande, and I'm speaking on behalf of my community. What do we want from our new superintendent? Well, we need someone that understands our community, that has strong people skills, that understands the Hispanic population. The Hispanic population is a rise here in our community. I can see just here at McDowell, at least 90% of the population are Hispanics. So if we are going to ask for qualifications of the new superintendent, who see that, that this person is familiar with what we need, with our community, with what we go through, how to build a strong and better community, how to outreach our community, to get involved. We want to, we know that we're lacking someone that is going to make decisions that are going to reflect in our kids. We want to make sure that we know this as a parent. I didn't have the luxury to meet any of you. I didn't even know what you guys were. Pardon my ignorance, but I just, my kid is in third grade, and I just started getting involved, and I'm like, why aren't these people making decisions on their kids? What is it that they're doing? I just have the luxury to meet the music, it's a great kid, and I'm like, oh, is that him, or is that him? Who is? So the parents don't even know. So the next person, we want him to be more involved with us, to come to our schools, to visit us, to listen to us, to have an open door policy, to make us feel welcome, not to be afraid, because we don't speak the language, because we don't know how to make up our point. I was talking to some of the parents, and they said, we want respect. Get the kind of respect. We want someone that listens to us and not to judge us for what we're wearing or to see us different. We want someone that has a background, that understands our cultures, that understands that we're a hard-working class and that we're growing and that all the challenges that we're facing every day to bring our kids to school. We would someone that can create a better, a strong bonding between the communities, is parent and child understand diversity, that to get us involved in what decisions are made. We would someone that can hear our voice. And that's it very much. So if we can get someone, I won't say bilingual, but someone that understands that why we're here, where we come from, and what our needs, that would be very important. And if he or she can outreach for it, the majority of the families that come from a low-income background, that have to work two jobs and have to struggle to come to send their kids to school, and that are afraid to get involved because they don't know if they can represent that, if it shows their face and make us feel welcome and listen to us and help us to build a better community, because the school is the passion of our community, is Petaluma.
Scott Wigger? I said that right, Wigger?
Yeah, sure. Good morning, and thank you all for being up with us pretty recently. My name's Scott Wigger. I'm a parent of a graduate from last year, a freshman at Casa Grande. I'm math department chair at Casa, going on eight or nine years now. So a couple things, I'm not quite sure what I have to add exactly that's going to, would be the deal breaker. I don't think I necessarily have it. I'm sure, I can add, there's a lot of the same things, but I just, I felt if you guys give up your time to be here, the least I can do is to be here also. I know a lot of newer parents, and so I think I should be there too. And I apologize for running when I leave, but the Casa Grande and Petaluma bike teams are racing tomorrow at Fort Orton. I'm going to go to them head down, so I'll let you know about that. So a couple things that I've kind of heard, one is sort of knowing who the superintendent is, and I've been able to note this, that one of the things I would like is upon graduation, when I'm sitting there, you know, at the football field, when the superintendent confers the class, I would like every parent to know who that person is. I'd like them to know the name. Somehow I've met that person, had some contact. Why that role's important? I know as an educator, the role's important, but because a parent, why is the superintendent important? And I'd like to kind of see that out there. Also, I guess as a parent, a little kind of taxpayer thing, I look at the superintendent contract, and you know, the superintendent gets a $300 a month stipend for community relations. I'm not quite sure what that is, although I, I mean, since I've been here in Petaluma, I've never seen that as a community member, whatever that happens to be. You know, so that's, I think it's like $3,000 a year for something. I'm not quite sure what we're getting for that, and I think it's worth sort of looking at. Sort of moving over to the educator side, I'm a big fan of leadership. You know, I've heard some people say, I think a superintendent needed to be a great teacher. I would actually say, I think they need to be, have been a teacher and been in a school, but I think a lot of great leaders who weren't necessarily great teachers are awesome coaches who weren't the best basketball players. And I think some of the things that these, that a good leader will do for us is leverage everybody else in the district. And a couple examples, for example, I remember when Ron Everett was principal at Casa Grande, Brian Howard was one of the assistant principals, and he, Ron had all of the assistant principals always doing something. I was out in the trailer, and Brian Howard would constantly come in out there and say, hey, we need to do this, let's do this. And so sometimes I didn't know what Ron did, but it was amazing because all of the assistant principals were just on the ground, moving and making things happen. I think a good leader will also just look for things that are going on and try to nurture it. We had a teacher several years ago who decided, who had a lot of students in this neighborhood here, and he decided to go knock on all the doors of the parents. A lot of kids speak English and stuff like that. What came out of it was is that the math department started a tutoring program here at McDowell School, sort of left the school and thought, okay, we're going to go where the kids are. And of course, this was all, you know, volunteer on teacher time. That program has sort of since fizzled, but I really think that would have been the kind of thing where someone up top could have said, wow, you know what? We can grab this, and we can run with this, and we can really grow, something like that. So, and then, you know, my example for, like, for example, the bike team, I think a good leader, Linda, does that, basically, I don't get any support through the school, it's not a school thing, however, I feel 100% supported. She trusts me to run the program, trusts me to do what it is. She knows that these are doing great things for kids, and really kind of stays out of the way, periodically just says, how's it going? And so I think that's the kind of thing, I think we need at the top, we need a strong leader that then sort of leverages all the strengths that people have, so it sort of magnifies it on down the way. And I don't think that's a top everything, but I think that's just good, strong leadership. So that's what, that's what I'm looking for. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. I love this. Blair Kelson?
Good timing. Hello? Can I have a quick, this is, I think no one can hear them.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Blair Kelson. I moved to Sonoma County about two years, or seven years ago. I have two children in Cherry Valley in first and fourth grade. Full disclosure, I voted for Mike in the last election.
Thanks, Mark.
That's very good legal work for me as well.
I'm voting for you.
So as well as being a parent, I'm the CEO of a company, Town Hall Traditional Medicinals up in, it's basketball, traditional medicinals, it's a herbal tea company, it's about 150 employees. And so I do a lot of hiring and do a lot of this stuff, public service. I'm swimming in public service these days. I'm on a lot of boards, I get asked to do a lot of things. And so the first thing I want to do is thank all of you for your service. I know what it's like to be here on a Saturday or a Friday night or a Thursday afternoon. You're taking time away from your families, your kids, and I appreciate that you're here and doing this, because I know exactly how I feel. So I think that's important as well. And you got to stand here and listen to criticism from us, too, on top of that, so. So, let's see. So I'm not an expert on schools and administration, but I am a little bit of an expert on running organizations and and, and change management and hiring people and things like that. So in, in my opinion, the ideal candidate for this job is currently a superintendent at a larger school district outside of Sonoma County. And I think we have a lot of opinions about Sonoma County and, and, and we have a lot. I've never lived in a city in California where as many people were from the city as Petaluma, which I think is wonderful. That's one of the reasons my wife and I moved up here. But also, it's very insular. The county's very insular, the towns are very insular. I'm the CEO of a company that was, boy, I went to work in, I moved to Petaluma, which is in Sonoma County. I didn't realize I was going to work in West Sonoma County. But a wonderful company, but really just needed some fresh outside perspectives. In my opinion, it's the mix of the, of the locals and the, the new thinking. And then you get people who come in here and embrace the past, have new ideas, gather around, work with the people who have been here. Don't try to alien it, try to come into the county and tell people what to do, but sort of embrace what's here, what's going well. And together, I always say, people ask me what I do at work, I make soup. I mix up all these different people and I make magic with them. And real literally what I do, we've increased our payroll of our company from four to ten million dollars in five years. We hired seventy-five people. And we've tripled the sales of the company and grown profit five times. And I'm not here to say I'm a great CEO or anything. That's what talent does. That's what new thinking does. That's what getting old ideas and, and people who are ingrained in the community and really strong members of the community and mix them up with new ideas and you put the two together and that's where magic happens. And, and I, I think that's, that's what I think that towns like Petaluma need. They need, I, I'm not sure the ideal candidate's not a superintendent of a school district in Manhattan who really wants to move to Sonoma County and wants to bring their ideas and really embrace this community and, and bring those new ideas. It's like opening windows and fresh air blows through your community when you bring in good, good, well, principal people and you mix it up with, with the current people. So that's my strong opinion about that. And I think that, that it should be a national search and you should hold it open for four or five months. The ideal candidate is working right now and I could be able to come here before July first. And I would hold it open and I would do a national search. I, I am attracting people to come and work here from like places like Kimberly Clark in Minnesota, Denver, Colorado, Washington DC, Milwaukee, Chicago, Atlanta. I'm getting people to pack up their families, look at people, two people gave work for me from SC Johnson the year they were getting married, postponed their weddings, come to Sonoma County because people really want to live here and be part of this community and raise their children here. And I think there's a lot of people who would really love to have this job. So that's my opinion about that. And the other thing that's really important is I think we need to hire a leader. That's different than administrator and that's different than a manager. So there, it's hard to have a conversation about them, I guess. But my understanding is there's a divide between the teachers and the board right now. And, and all I know is what I hear on the street. I'm not an expert in this, but as I always say in my company, what, what people say in the halls, that's reality because that's their reality. So the reality on the street in Petaluma is the board and the teachers don't get along very well. And I think you need to bring a leader in here who could take that unhealthy tension and create healthy tension within it. So I think that's, that's also really important. And gosh, if I've learned anything in life, leaders are A players. And A players only know how to hire A players. If you're a star, you only know how to hire stars. If you're a manager or you're an administrator, you're, you're probably a B player and you're going to hire C players. And if you're a C player, you're going to hire D players. You have to have people, I have hired, most of the people I've hired are smarter than me. That's hard to do, but that's why we're doing so well. I'm leading them, but I'm not telling them what to do. They're telling me what to do. We need a leader that will come into our community and tell us what to do and work with us. And it's a real difference between administrator and manager. Again, these are, these are my opinions, but. And I also believe that we need a servant leader. A person who is going to stand in front of their administrative staff and stand in front of all the teachers and say, I am here to work for you. Tell me your frustrations, tell me your problems. I'm, I'm, I'm working for you. You tell me what you need and that's what I'm going to do. And a manager administrator is going to tell them what to do. And that's a different, that's a big difference between managers and leaders. I think that's my, my point. They, they say in life that when someone, like, somebody gets up and speaks, you can only remember three things. So here's my three things. Hire someone from outside Sonoma County, hold the search open for a long time, do a national search, and hire a servant leader. Thanks.
Thank you, Blair. Didn't do my clapping anymore, darn it. Okay, the last card I have is Jackie Levien?
It's me again.
Levien, right, I said it right?
I know I'm not the silent majority that you wanted to hear from and you're probably tired of hearing from me, so I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. But I want to just say that Blair, that was very well said. Thank you. I think I really identified Tom Joynt's comments. I don't know if he's still here. A little bit about me, I am a consultant by trade and I've had the distinct privilege of helping startup businesses and technology in Silicon Valley launch and grow. I've helped, had the, the, the privilege of working with nonprofits do the same, what we call double bottom line organizations, where they are both responsible for revenue generation and also for social impact. And my career has taken me into academia at UCSF and I am working with some very incredibly bright researchers and healthcare leaders. And in that capacity, I have both developed my own research in leadership. I would say that what Blair said is very supported by the literature, the leadership literature. I don't know if you're familiar with Peter Singh, he's an MIT lecturer. He wrote the book, The Fifth Discipline. He recently published an article in the Stanford Innovation, Social Innovation Review, which is a magazine put out by Stanford. And Singh points to, we are in an age where we have some really complex problems. Healthcare is one of them, education unfortunately is another. And Singh and many other leaders in, in this space have said, we need systems leaders. And you've probably heard about systems leadership. What that means, and I think you talked about that Blair or kind of alluded to it, what that means is, is that the leaders really have an understanding of the larger ecosystem in which they operate and they have a willingness and a supporting style in order to engage all of the constituencies. And they have, part of just the way they are as leaders is they're naturally collaborative. This is something that they embody. And I would say that we are in dire need of a systems leader. Systems leaders know how to leverage frontline engagement for the benefit of the larger system. I'll point you to Dr. David Feinberg, who was the former CEO of UCLA Medical System. He transformed that medical system. And one of the ways, primary way that he did that was engaging people at every level of the organization. He passed out his cards to patients. He, it's called leadership rounding. He lived that. Leadership rounding, he lived that. He visited as the CEO, this was his, you know, he could have never left his office, but that's not what he did. He visited patient rooms, he delivered meals, he helped nurses bathe patients. He embodied this idea of this servant leader. How do I help my people engage? And how do I help them have greater empowerment to do a better job? And I think what Blair was saying about, you know, their soup makers, I think that's a great analogy. I am an expert in engagement, frontline engagement. And I will just tell you that frontline engagement is probably one of the only ways to really expand impact. And I think that that's what we're trying to do as a district, is have a larger impact on our students and in this community. And so I would just say that we need a transformational leader, someone who can cast a vision that inspires, that's inclusive, someone who can just naturally build relationships, someone who is willing to engage in this participatory leadership style or servant leadership style. And somebody, Leslie Hugh embodies these values. Somebody who models them day after day after day. So it's not just something that they espouse intellectually, but it's something that they embody, they practice, and they inspire others to do the same. And just to kind of go back to the comment, I think this was a conversation I had with Mike. And I know you guys are getting beaten up about the whole business model thing. I would say that, I echo what Tom said. There are lessons that can be learned from the business community. Tom talked about Honda, I pinned Mike down and talked to him about Toyota Production System, talked to him about Kaizen. And, and at the heart of both of those approaches for continuous improvement is, is this idea of leveraging your frontline assets, engaging and empowering your frontline people in order to get them on board and to make changes in the system so that the system, the system performs better. And so I do think that there are lessons from business that can help strengthen our district. But ultimately, education is not a business enterprise. And I think we need to know that, it's just not. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you, I appreciate having us forum. And I'm optimistic that our next superintendent will, will embody these things.
Thanks, Jackie. Do you have any other speakers?
We're speaking cards at the back, you came in late.
If anybody walked in and you wish to speak, you go ahead and pull a card out. So Krista O'Connor?
I've been listening for a long time. And I'm Krista O'Connor, I teach at Petaluma High School. I'm the high school vice president of the union program. I'm currently, it's a support provider for our new teachers. I'm the interim English department chair because our department chair is on maternity leave. I have two children that graduated from Petaluma High School. They went to Valley State, they went to Petaluma Junior High. Right now, my husband's at a Skills USA event that's happening at Petaluma High School. Is working at helping as a volunteer judge today. That's a huge event. And Christopher Jones, one of our teachers and many of our teachers and many of the members of the Petaluma High community are working to put that on for not just our district, but for a wide range of students from all over the state. And it's, you know, it's an incredible thing that we have this happening today as well as all of the athletic events and everything that, that are going on constantly. I, I've been thinking a lot about this process and about where we are. And it was what Blair just said about teacher board relations. And, and I feel that it's been a very difficult year. I feel as though the word is out there that, that things may not be looking so good between our various groups that are, that are working so hard. And I guess my point is this, that we have some teachers working incredibly hard in this district right now to make this be an incredibly desirable place for any person looking for a superintendent position to come. I, I do feel as though we are taking a chance right now that, that our reputation for having some dissension going on or some, some lack of agreement, that, that could hurt us in a superintendent search. What I would like to say to you and to Mr. Bowman and to everybody who's taken the time to be here today is that I honestly don't think that this should be an adversarial process. I think that all of us, when I, I've worked with your children, working with your children, I, I do my job every day to the best of my ability and that's not always an easy thing. Our reigning president on Thursday, I should be happy to be one of those wonderful students assigned those that, that reflect all of the hard work that they're doing. And yet I felt, you know, I feel that many of us are compelled to be here because we, we have, we do have a stake in this process. We do value the community in which we live. I've been here thirty years now and my family's been here longer. And I have a brand new baby grandson who will be a student in Petaluma City Schools as well. And, and for me, you know, I have a lot vested in, in this and I think all of us do. And I would hope that your process for finding our new leader will be as inclusive as possible.
We're looking at criteria.
I know, I, I hear you, I hear you. And I'm saying that the criteria to which we are, the criteria for a person, what we're seeking, what we are really seeking, I think all of us, is a person who understands. As many people have already spoken, and that's why I really hesitated to come up here at this point, because so many people have so eloquently addressed the points that we, that, that matter most to us. But the diversity, the inclusiveness, the, the richness of this community, it's essential that we don't let the current situation of the possible, you know, the, the tension that was referred to, those disagreements, that we cannot really, we can't, we cannot let that, we can't afford to let that get in the way of the process and the selection and what we're, what we're actually looking for. I, I really do feel that, you know, each one of you, you're here for a reason. We're all here for a reason, we're all doing the very best that we can do under the circumstances. And it's an unfortunate set of circumstances that has allowed us to be where we are with, you know, the two bargaining units. It's, it's reality, it's what we have to work through, we have to get past it. But I really don't feel like there is any, any teacher or any classified person who, who is working against what you're trying to do and what we're all trying to do. I really feel as though positions have been taken and anyone who's coming to apply as a superintendent in this district is going to have to contend with that. And yet I, I think, I think all of us have to do our very best to communicate that it's workable, that we are willing, that it's not adversarial. It's, it's a process that we are currently trying to deal with and get through. And it's not something that should stand between you and the teachers or you and the classified people or you and the parents or, or any of us really. And I just, I just, I really feel compelled to say that because I feel as though there have been a lot of emotions and feelings and attitudes and perceptions and perspectives going back and forth. And, and I feel as though this is our opportunity really to let everyone know, not just Sonoma County or California, but as you were saying, you know, look out into the broader expanses. And whoever that person is, maybe that person lives in Sonoma County right now, maybe they're not. But whoever you select or we all select together, whoever that is, needs to be ready to take our, the, the grandness and the wonderfulness and the amazing. I mean, really, when I think about all the thousands that are going on in this district with our families and our students and our parents and our teachers who are working so, so hard really on behalf of those students. It's not about, it's not about what each of us can get in it for ourselves, what it can say, it's not what we can do for ourselves, what we can do for our country. It's what we can do for our district is, you know, let's try to come together in a, in a real genuine way and get past all of this and make this, make this a fabulous process. And that's all. Thank you.
I don't want to be like the auctioneer, we're going what's going. So again, if somebody wants to bring a card out?
We'll be here till twelve.
Why don't we just take that? We'll just take a five minute break, that way nobody's under any compulsion to hurry. All right, if you go back, I think we've got. So let's, let's get right back to it, so we have Brett Schlup. I said that right?
Slow.
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 Slow?
Yeah.
Okay, slow.
So, thank you. I didn't come for the prepared response, but I give a lot of thought to this just over the years as we've been transitioning through an extremely rough act, to say the least, in the educational system in California. I come here today as a parent. Some of you also know I have from the work in the district as a counselor. But I really would like to speak as a parent. I think we have a golden opportunity to relook at the way, I guess from a top-down fashion, if you will, the, the way our district is laid out in terms of an organizational chart, in terms of duties and visions. While I, I don't disagree with the course that the board's taken in the past, I mean, we obviously were the Titanic just about to hit the iceberg financially and we've made it through and were whole and I'd certainly appreciate that. And I certainly appreciate that, you know, as a parent. I feel like we've been able to preserve a lot of programs that other districts cut and so forth. That said, you know, as a counselor, as a frontline person, it hasn't been easy, you know, just politically and financially and everything else. But I don't want to go off into that. I really would like the board, hiring committee, anyone who's involved in this process, to look for a candidate who can really be a true educational visionary. When I did my administrative credential program, there's a lot of talk and classes between, about the difference between management and leadership. There really is a difference and you need somebody with multiple skills, obviously. I think this is a golden opportunity in that we're finally coming out of this storm, although we're not going to benefit from the LCAP in the way that other districts are, but certainly we're going to be on a better ground. And so this is an opportunity to really, to heal some wounds with our staff, our faculty, and then move forward and really listen to the community, listen to the parents, listen to the teachers, listen to the counselors, about what it is, what kind of tools do they need, what kind of support do they need. You know, with the new demands in terms of completely reshaping our assessment, we've all known and maybe not loved so much the STAR testing for many years. But, you know, we're in a completely different world now. And teachers are going to need a tremendous amount of support with training. As we enter our first year, we're at really count, so to speak, with the new tasking model. We need somebody who can really, not only themselves, but also organize and administrate the team, that can sell this to the staff, that can offer the training, offer the support, offer the leadership, offer the guidance, and offer the vision. There are amazing amount of great curriculums out there, different programs that we could adopt. But we need someone who can really go out and learn about those and bring them back to Petaluma and explain to our community, our teachers, our faculty, our staff about why these would be the best for our schools. And I truly believe that if there's somebody there that can assemble a team to work with them to be true educational experts, that this district can move forward in a really positive way. Again, I think that the key here is leadership. You surround yourself with a great management team. But we need somebody who can go out there and be a rock star for Petaluma and really put us back on the map in terms of education.
Thank you, Brett. Our last speaker, so Julia Magnette. Did I say that right?
Good morning, Julia Magnette. I teach at Grant Elementary School. Thank you for your, all your work. I appreciate you for all that. And as well, school board. I feel that it's, I echo what you said about having an educational visionary. I think that's really important. I also think we need to be sure that our hiring committee, like when we hire, whether it's a custodian, a new teacher, a principal, we do that at school. We make sure we have a certificating staff member, a teacher, another principal, and maybe another administrator. I think it's critical that we have everybody represented to choose someone for the good of the whole.
We're not across us, we're doing criteria.
Criteria? I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Like, come right.
That's okay. Yeah, we did that Tuesday night. And you're free to become another public comment because we let go of the public comment. Or to write us what you think about your hiring selection protocol. Yes, exactly. But this agenda is for criteria. What you need to see and demand, women, we put it that seat.
Very good. Yes. Then I would cut it short. I think, you know, interpersonal skills and definitely a strong commitment to children and the whole child, the whole educator and the whole community.
Thank you. Okay, so, everybody good? We'll wait fifteen minutes, but we'll wait and look back at us. There's other businesses going to go on, so this was the only thing. It was for you. And I... Yes, Brett?
My, there was one last thought that I forgot to mention.
Come on up.
Okay, I want to be a stage on.
Oh, the post-speech attendant here.
So just one quick note. I would encourage those involved in the hiring process to, if a great candidate is not found in the window of time that we're looking at, to consider an interview. Because I really, having been involved in hiring for many years, I think we're on an exceptionally tight timeline for a very important position. So I would rather get someone who's great within them and wait it out.
And while we're waiting, you know, if you run into others that couldn't be here today, this doesn't close the opportunity for, you know, to participate and to write letters, write emails, phone calls. This isn't participate now or never. So if someone couldn't be here, you'd think of something out of this. This has been really great and very encouraging, so we welcome all input.
Also, every meeting, there's a public comment. And again, you can speak on public comment. Anything that's in our subject matter jurisdiction is non-agendized items. That's what public comment's for. It's your time to share your concerns, whether you're coming from a parent perspective, a teacher perspective, concerned citizen that's never had a kid or a year old student. I mean, that's your time.
Can I ask a question about the hiring committee, what it's going to consist of?
That's the selection matter. No, you can, but next public comment, you come talk to us about. Or out of meetings, if you want to ask or you want to meet with somebody, be glad. It's not an agendized item right now. That was agendized Tuesday, last past Tuesday. That was our agenda.
Yeah, I remember.
But if you want to come make suggestions, agenda at the next public comment. Or write an email, ask questions, and we'll address those as best we can.
When is the next meeting?
Our next regular meeting is March tenth? Yeah, March tenth.
Second and fourth Tuesday of the month, with exception to some summer months or holiday months. And they're posted on the Petaluma City School website under the Board of Education Agenda Minutes meeting dates.
The next month is a holiday month. There's only one meeting on the tenth.
And they're all here?
No, they're at the district office.
Eight hundred Douglas Street?
Two hundred.
Just down the street from Petaluma High School. Oh, yeah, Kenny's Doris, right?
When is this officially half starting, the date of the year?
What's that? We did a date timeline. We had the office, the last, I don't have it with me, but it was on the last agenda. There was a timeline.
The application process, those applications are coming in, the paper screening hasn't started yet.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I have a voice. All right. The applications have started coming in. The deadline is, I believe, the thirteenth. And screening will start sometime between now and...
So coming on, please go to the meeting on the tenth. There's more to say. Nope.
And screening is just screening. It starts about a second. It's just screening.